All right, I'd like to welcome everyone to the Radcliffe City Council Work Session for Monday, June 7th at 5:00 PM at Radcliffe City Hall. It's also being streamed live on Facebook. If you all will please rise for our invocation and remain standing for our pledge.
Okay. Let's pray. Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for all the blessings that you give us each and every day. Father, we ask that you bless us as we go into this meeting and bless our leadership as they make decisions that will further this city. Keep those that are serving abroad and at home safe, Father, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, if we can, roll call, please.
All right. Deroche?
Here.
Jackson?
Here.
Merle?
Here.
Owens?
Here.
Thompson?
Here.
And Yates?
Here.
All right, we have a quorum. All right. Tim, is everything sound on the sound before we get started? Everything sound good? Hear it? All right. Well, I'd like to welcome everyone. This is our first official after almost a year's worth of not being able to sit together. This is our first meeting where we're able all to sit together, so hopefully the view looks pretty good from down there down. We've been up here for a while, so, but yeah, so hopefully we're still working out the bugs. Welcome everyone that showed up here. First on this work session agenda, we have Fort Knox, Radcliffe, Radcliffe Fort Knox Tourism Commission. We have Ms. Julie Croft, Tourism, or excuse me, Treasurer, and Bob Moore, Commissioner. Bob, you want to move about three feet to the left? How are you? I know Bob's an old pro at this, but Julie, you're in for a real treat.
That's what I'm saying.
Yep, so, Bob, how, good seeing everyone.
Yeah, hello. Am I on?
Yep.
Okay, congratulations to the three new members of the City Council. The last time I was here, you weren't, and it's been a long time. So, very quickly, the last year, as you know, has been a very unusual year. Some of the things on the agenda for today, we would have normally done with you back in February and March. We start our March, I mean, we start our budget discussions in February, March, and then we approve it, and we normally come in here for you to see it, read it, and approve it in April or May, but this is a little bit different year. And last year, in fairness to Julie, who is with me today, she was not the Treasurer when we started the current budget, and she wasn't part of those discussions. So, we felt that it would be good for both of us to be here. I can answer questions of what happens and lies and what we did and didn't do in the last year, so that's what we're going to do, and we're going to do a little tag team. I'm going to cover some of the amendments from this year, the audit, and then I'll move it over to Julie and we'll cover the next year's audit, uh, budget. The audit was done in January, as it always is. It was completed. There were no findings, no recommendations. A copy of it was sent to the city and was incorporated into your audit, so when you approved your audit, you already had a copy of ours, and there was nothing new or anything in there. Normally, we would have a courtesy and would come in and tell you that earlier, but you actually have already approved it. I think the formality is, in a meeting next week, you'll go ahead and approve our audit as part of your normal course of actions. So, that brings me to the current budget. We knew in March that things were not going to be normal, so we made some adjustments. And for those of you, very quickly, who don't know our full funding process, we get a 3% add-on transit room tax, according to KRS 91A350, that governs the collection of the tax and how we spend it. And it doesn't come out of the city budget, it doesn't come out of the restaurant, I mean, the motels, this is an add-on tax. That's 95% of our income. The state does a 1%, state tourism does a 1% add-on tax to all motels in the state, and we can apply for a little piece of that pie, and it's called matching funds. So, when you look at our normal budget, we're going to have some interest, our transit room tax, and about $12,000 in matching funds. Last year, the state said, "Don't expect any matching funds." Normally, we look at about a $240,000, $250,000 income from the transit room tax. We knew we were not going to get that, so when we put together the budget, we put $200,000 down, and based on the state guidance, we put zero down for matching funds, and then we included the interest that we anticipated getting. Over the course of the year, as we got into April and May of this year, it became very obvious that we were not going to achieve the $200,000. So, we did, in fairness to everybody, an amendment to that and brought it down to $170,500. So, that's the first thing that we've amended. The second thing is that we actually picked up some matching funds. And for those who, a quick example, there are some things that the state asks us to consider for advertising. For example, the Quest magazine. If we do advertising in the Quest magazine and we pay for that, then we can apply for matching funds because the state asks us to do that. They'll reimburse us for half. So, we have some matching funds this year, so we amend that to $7,736 to date in matching funds. So, that's the second amendment. Down, I'm going to skip the money market account for now and look at the PPL, PP loan. As you know, all tourism industry suffered. We were encouraged to apply for that. We did, and we picked up $14,900. That's currently considered a loan. Once we have all the documentation in to convert that to a grant, we intend to do that, but right now, it's listed as a loan. Then the other thing on there was the money carried forward, $69,990. That's the money that if we spent everything that was in our budget, we would have to pull out of our funds to cover. We did not spend everything in our budget. The exact amount of that has yet to be determined, but you will get a copy of all of that in July, but we are not going in to pull out $99,000. We did not spend all of that that we budgeted. So, that's the basic part of the amended part. There is one more little thing, and I got to find the note here. We were asked to help with a billboard, and this was a recent thing back just a few weeks ago for the largest knife billboard out on I-65. And we agreed to partially fund that billboard, so we have to amend the budget. We've ended up taking an additional $4,500 out of reserves to cover that. That also qualifies perhaps for matching funds, and once we get all of this done and the contract has been approved, again, we may apply for matching funds, and if that gets approved, then that will add to the $7736 in our final budget for the year. So, that's what we've done amendment-wise. We've been very careful in what we've spent. There are some things that we have in this year's budget that we did not spend money on that we've moved over into the next year's budget. We had in this year's budget to pick up, replace some office furniture. We did not do that. Obviously, we did not go shopping, had no interest in doing any of that. So, you'll see some line items in the budget that looks like we've duplicated some things. That's because we didn't spend it this year. So, next year's budget has been modeled primarily off of this year. Very little changes in what you see, the advertising plan, and everything that we've had in place this year. We're going to carry forward pretty much into next year. We had stopped doing some of the advertising way out. We did not do Pandora this year. We're not going to do Pandora again next year. The state asks us to stay more local and not go as far out, so we've done some of those things. So, what we've got, and I'm going to hand the mic over here to Julie to talk to you a little bit about this year's budget, is pretty much a duplicate of what we've gone through. Our receipts are coming back up, and I think she might tell you a little bit of happy news with that because she's had a pretty successful last few days over in her motel. So, Julie?
All right, for the 2022 budget, it's $200,000, and the interest is $1,200. We have matching funds of $8,000. The money market, which was carried forward, was $57,126. We also did, yeah, we passed in May of 17, or two, sorry, 17th of 2021, we voted to contribute $2,000 a year to KRDA for the next five years, and that's starting for the 2022.
We're looking at about a $266,000 budget again next year, all things all together. That's in keeping with doing the advertising plan that we have, that you have a copy of, and we did a small increase in salaries. We did, as those of you who've been here before and listened to this, we discovered that Debbie was way behind the power curve, and we're trying to get her caught up to the minimum of what the city does for its salary base, so we've added another dollar an hour to her salary for this year, and we brought Kelly up 3% this year. She had been at 2% for a couple of years, four years in a row, so we, those are the salary increases we've done this year. If we do next year, depending on where we are, if we do another dollar for Debbie, which would be the outlying idea, that would bring her on par with the base salary of anybody on the Radcliffe City salary. So, that's where we are with the budgets. That's what we've done with last year and this year. Hopefully, going forward, our receipts will start coming back up to normal again, and we'll be able to start doing some of the outlying things that we've done before. Any questions on our little exciting budget stuff?
Julie, are you seeing on your, at the, hold on, I know, I'm starting to see more cars.
Oh, yeah. Definitely.
So, are you seeing, I know, for say, you can't ask directly, do you know what they're traveling here for, in the sense that there's a lot of them still at Fort Knox?
A lot, it's definitely Fort Knox, baseball teams.
Okay, so you're.
People starting to pick back up, yeah. It's exciting, it's finally shut down for almost a year.
Yeah, when'd you guys reopen?
We opened March 4th. We shut down March 20th of last year.
What was your?
The phone started finally ringing, and we knew it was time.
Yeah, I know, I know, but I do see Candlewood and all those.
Yeah.
Picked up. I know your parking lot's been good, so.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's been exciting, yeah. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
It's my first time seeing this, so JJ would say there's no wrong questions, right? Community requests. What kind of requests do, does the community ask for?
A lot of it are things that we can do some advertising with. If you're going to, a real quick example is some of the ball teams will ask us for $250, and in exchange for that, we get advertising space on whatever they put out. And so, if we, if we don't have some advertising or some promotion, we just have to say no, unfortunately. So, we put money aside. There are things that are repetitive, the $200, $250 thing, and they come in, they show us their little pamphlet, their handouts, and show us where they're going to have our advertisement on there, and then we'll go with those things. And then, if you don't mind, I'm going to talk just briefly about another thing because E-Town's budget was in the paper, and there's always comparisons between E-Town and Radcliffe, and what do we do and what do they do and what do we not do? And I'm going to give you a real quick example. They have a restaurant tax and we can't, and there's a lot of background that we won't go into that. But two years ago, Radcliffe Transit Room Income was $266,000. Theirs was $766,000. They have the motels on I-65. Their restaurant tax was 4.2 million, and the KRS that covers the restaurant tax is 91A390, is far more liberal in what they can do with that money because a lot of it is generated locally. The local people eat, so the legislative body allows them to use some of that locally. So, E-Town and folks like E-Town can do a lot of community stuff that we just have to apologize for because it's not a money pocket that we can use. So, we hate doing that, but that's, that's what that's all about. And unfortunately, until a legislative body sees fit to change that, we can't do a restaurant tax, even if you wanted to.
Or liquor tax.
Or, yeah, or all those things, so, yeah, and, yeah, it, the community requests that we get has to have some kind of promotion or advertising component to it. That's what we look at. If we have it, we'll do what we can with it.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Bob, I don't know if you want to say it, or I can say it, well, the two, but a lot, just, just so people at home may be watching or that may not know, is that we cannot have that tax based on the classification of home rule, and that was actually asked of me today about that because I was talking about the liquor tax and the police rates or what we can use that for. And, you know, that's, that was something that was set aside for, for cities of 7,999 and below, and E-Town went through that phase where they didn't make that transition, that fourth-class city to a second-class city, and so it ended up where we did, and it governs us on what we can and can't do. And so, cities like By &amp; Grove, Mike, if I'm not, correct me if I'm right, but they can have a restaurant tax and a liquor tax, and By, Elizabeth Town falls in that same category, so that's why we can't have, it's not something that this body can enact, it has to be something that the state legislature allows us to enact.
Yeah, at the time when the decision was made, it was class four and class five cities, and Radcliffe had applied for, based on your population, you had been classified as class two, and.
Now, we're home rule and so.
I do have a question. So, we're looking at 2021 amended and 2022, and forgive me if I, if you've already addressed this, but I kind of wanted to compare the 2022 budget to 20, not last year, but the year before. So, is this transit room tax on pace with 2019?
No.
No?
No.
How does that compare?
2019, we got, we got $266,000.
Okay.
In 2019.
Okay.
And we're looking at about $170,000 this year, and we're bringing that up and hoping for $200,000 next year because we're beginning to see the things come back into play that brought us there.
Okay.
So.
I remember you mentioning the $266.
Yeah, we took quite a hit this year.
If you guys come up with anything, please call Kelly or any one of us between now and next Tuesday. We'll come in and we will, we, we're just coming in to you guys to make a motion and hopefully pass all of this stuff next time unless you have questions that you want to ask at that time. We invite them in and give them an overview of what we do and why and what's going to cause it. Make a question.
Oh, okay. And you want to be reappointed, Bob?
Sure.
You can make your hair gray, you better watch out.
Anything else?
That's it.
You got it, Mary?
I guess so.
We're out of here.
All right, thank you all.
Good to see you, Bob. Ms. Croft?
Is the indoor pool open?
It is.
It is open?
The only thing that's not is the hot tub, and from what I know, I believe July night it was going to be open, but we're waiting for the health department to let us know.
Well, if you ever have problems with your Yates swimming down there in that hot tub, just let us know. We can have a.
Well, I tend to frequent the local hotels that have the pools. I get through the side door.
Oh, there you go. Yeah, just come on inside.
All right, moving on. Murray, we have, where are you going to come up? This is a zone map amendment from R, R4 zone to commercial zone, probably located on the east side of Southweston Road next to Horseshoe and Shelton Road. It's right there, almost in the curve. It's kind of a wooded area. It's right, almost next to the Roofing Company, A, was it Quality Roofing? It's kind of right there, so.
Okay, so, the city of Radcliffe received a, sorry about that.
The city of Radcliffe received a zone map amendment application from Thomas Kimball of Joshua's Friends, and the property, as described, is on the east side of South Wilson Road between Horseshoe Court and Shelton Road, approximately 560 feet south of Horseshoe Court, Radcliffe, Kentucky, PVA map number 161-40-00-053. The property location is illustrated on the attached boundary survey of the Lanham property. The current owner is Gerald Lanham, so he has signed the application as the owner to apply for the zone change on behalf of Thomas Kimball. The transaction is contingent for purchase of the property to get the zone map amendment approved. The total acreage of the property proposed for rezoning is 0.792 acres. The existing zoning classification is a R4 zone. The proposed zoning classification is a commercial zone. The existing land use classification of the property is vacant. Surrounding zoning classifications are R3 to the, to the west, R4 to the north and south, and commercial to the east and south. The Radcliffe Planning Commission has recommended approval of the zone map amendment from a R4 zone to a commercial zone. It was a unanimous vote, and that was based on the findings of fact from the planning staff report, and that was indicating that the Conference of Plans supported the proposed map amendment, and as well that the commercial zone was an appropriate zone classification.
And no opposition?
No opposition. It was unanimous. There was no one from the public that came forward to comment or give testimony.
Any questions regarding, and of course, we have, you know, if you have any questions or something that comes up, you can always reach out to Murray through the week or reach out to Ashley that can ask that question, get your question in.
For our new members, just a reminder, and you'll, you'll learn this in training, you are not supposed to engage in any additional factual investigation on your own. That's a no-no. The planning commission has already done that. The City Council can do that if they have a new public hearing, but the council usually doesn't want to do that. That's, that's why we have a planning commission. So, that means no talking to neighbors, driving by and interviewing people.
Finding a fact.
Yeah, and so, if there are questions, please direct them to City Hall. We'll certainly get you all the information you need, but most everything you should want to know is in that review from the planning commission.
So, you had a.
When was the public hearing?
The public hearing was this past Thursday night.
And we have, there's a sign that's placed on the property, then every adjacent property owner is notified of the public hearing, and then it's published in the paper.
Thank you.
Yeah, we have to put out those notices two weeks in advance of the hearing.
And no opposition, no questions?
I did get one phone call from a property owner adjoining, just asking what the plans were for the property, what they were rezoning it to, just basic questions, kind of getting information.
Getting information, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, any other questions for Mr. Warner?
Thank you.
Easy, Murray.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mom.
Thank you.
All right. And then finally, on the agenda for the work session, we have one of our, I just looked up, made eye contact, Ms. Featherstone here, one of our board members, so, how are you, ma'am? We have the boards and commission, appointments and reappointments. You all should have a list. This is just the planning and zoning, code enforcement, board of adjustments, and on the backside is forestry. Forestry is one that we're trying to, if you know anyone that wants to engage in the forestry side, we're having, we've even tried to reach out with Vince and stuff. He's tried to recruit some people. There are some obstacles there because our ordinance requires you to live within the city limits. He has asked maybe if we can go outside of that scope, if we can't find anybody, you know, wanting to participate. Honestly, Vince and, and a lot of his folks that work on those trails and stuff, and I think Tim will tell you, you know, they spend a lot of time and volunteer time out there. Some of the board members, over time, have just kind of pulled away from some of that stuff, just due to age or, you know, heat or being too hot out there and stuff. So, it's just an active board, you would say, probably, right, Tim? You know, they.
Yeah, there's a lot of volunteer.
Lot of volunteers and stuff like that. So, if you know anybody that might be interested in sitting on the board that wants to participate, just let me know. That's just one that we've had some difficulties trying to get people on. If there's any questions regarding any of these people, I'm assuming most of you guys probably know them by name, by seeing them. All folks willing to volunteer and be a part of the city, so. There's no questions? If you have a question, just follow up with me or whatever, and we can discuss it, but all of them have asked to be reappointed. So, there are no questions. All right, we're coming to the end of our meeting. Budget meeting, we'll have chances finalized some of the numbers that we were working on, so we'll have that for the next council meeting, for the first reading. We will follow that up with a second meeting, and that'll just be, that'll be a vote meeting. I don't know if, Ashley will be reaching out to you guys for some times and dates so we can do that second meeting. I don't think there's anything else as far as that. I think there was, was there, on the budget meetings?
Okay. First reading will be for a council meeting, second meeting. Talk with them on that one?
Mr. Roach, you got anything?
Well, just a reminder that on September the 11th, we're going to have our Radcliffe Cultural Festival. I got a text message today from someone wanting to know if it was moving forward, and it is. So, you know, the good thing is, I mean, things are starting to really open up now, so if we've got people that are looking to participate, you know, some of the activities that we have involve talent, so, and if they're doing that as a group, they may want to start looking at trying to put their performances together now, start working on it. I know there was somebody that I talked to the last time we did this that said they needed several months of preparatory time to be able to put a large group together. So, just a reminder that we are going to be doing this, and so for those folks that want to set up a booth, we've got all of our food trucks lined up for that day already, but for those folks that want to set up some type of booth and sell your wares, please reach out to us and let us know. Either Toshi or myself are taking those applications. We've got it posted on Facebook, so please start reaching out to us now so that we can start preparing and know how many people are going to be participating. And that will take place out here on Freedom's Way in Lincoln Trail that weekend. Is there anything I'm missing on that, Toshi?
Sounds good.
You know, I know it seems early to be talking about this, but, you know, that event took a lot of work two years ago, and for those folks that are going to be participating, some of those will take a lot of work to get their part together as well. So, just want to make sure that that's out there early enough that people can actually plan for that particular date. So, we're very excited. This is one of the first dates, I think, that we've got this year with some big activities planned.
All weekend.
That's all I have.
Ms. Yer?
Yes, I would just like to make an announcement for the Herring County NAACP. They're going to be having a Juneteenth, starting on June 18th, 19th, and 20th. If anyone would be interested, there are flyers out on the NAACP website. They will start out with, at Calvin Community Center by having a dinner at the center. Tickets are $25. And Saturday, they will be doing a Mr. and Mrs. Juneteenth for those teenagers that would want to be involved, and then Sunday, they would be having a country church service at Haycraft Park in Elizabeth Town. So, if anyone is interested, you can reach out to the NAACP if you'd like to be a part.
Ms. Murray?
Next Tuesday, the 15th, at Calvin. The Fifth Corps will be our speaker for the Radcliffe Small Business Alliance Lunch Meeting. It is open to the public. That is next Tuesday at Calvin, starting at 11:30. The meeting will be at 12:00.
Ms. Owens?
Just want to reiterate what we had a couple of days ago, which was the anniversary, the 35th anniversary of the Red Brick Cottage and Farmhouse Decor, one of the three generations and two, three fur babies that keep that place going. So, as I, we always remind ourselves and visitors and family members, remember to remember to shop local, buy local, and support local. So again, happy thirty-fifth anniversary to the Red Brick Cottage here in Radcliffe.
Oh, thank you. Kim?
Just a reminder that next city council meeting, I have an appointment in Louisville at the same time, so I won't be able to be here. But I am in agreement with the budget. I think the budget's pretty good. And the raises that we talked about.
Yep.
I just wanna say congratulations to Jabari Rashid. He is a North Harden soccer player who also plays for the Louisville City Academy. He's, his team is gonna be playing for the national championship in Greensboro, North Carolina, and only sixty-four teams in the country are gonna be playing. So it's a great accomplishment for him and his team.
Awesome, thank you. All right, just some quick, July first, we start our second, our passive limb pickup. So we'll make sure that we get enough information out on that. We'll put that out. Hopefully, I think we still may have some banners laying around from my, I don't know.
July one.
July, yeah. So we encourage people to go ahead and get their, their tree limbs out. Again, we will try to educate those folks on how to place the limbs out. There's a couple I can drive you right over here off Atcher Street and show you that, that are quite, very, very questionable. I think, I mean, they're just piled. I mean, it's just, but, you know, again, we're, that's just a process and our guys do a great job on trying to pick it up. Next, July third will be our fireworks date. We will have that information out hopefully this week. We, our company that we've used for over twenty years, unfortunately, because of COVID, went out of business. They consolidated with a larger company out of Tennessee. And unfortunately, because of that consolidation, those dates that we typically would use for our fireworks show has been eaten up by a larger organization. And so luckily, working with my good friend down in Elizabeth Town, Jeffrey Gregory, was able to put me in contact with the people they use. And they were willing to participate and help us get our fireworks show off this year. So we appreciate them. We're working very closely with them. And so we, they, we have the date set, so it'll be July second for Vine Grove, July third for Radcliffe. And then July fourth will be E-Town and Fort Knox. So I think everybody, if they wanna see our fireworks show that weekend in Harden County, will have that opportunity. Not including like your smaller towns like Rainyville and some of those places that probably will have something. That'll be followed up by July, I'm trying to think here, July. I read that text, sorry, threw me off. September tenth, we will be having the Jeep Show down at Boundary Oak and Red Hill Cutlery. That's being done by a community sponsor. And then that'll be followed up with the parade that morning, the cultural festival. And then that night, the country music show and everything they're putting on up there. So obviously, we're getting back in the swing of things, followed by, of course, Halloween. And then we'll go into Christmas and things are starting to slowly get, I get to see Mike Pike's beautiful face sitting next to me now with no mask on and just, you're welcome, Mike.
My privilege and pleasure. Breathe the free air.
Yes. This Friday is the fifth anniversary of the Family Fun Ice Cream. Michelle Harmon, forgive me for failing to mention that earlier, but I do wanna go back up and let everyone know on Wilson Road, the Family Fun Ice Cream is celebrating their fifth anniversary with a ribbon cutting at noon, but also a lot of other festivities happening that day. So please support, like, like Ms. Terry said, our local businesses and go out and celebrate their anniversary this Friday.
Yep, this Friday. I won't be in town. I'm actually leaving, but I will send my regards to them. The twelfth, is there something going on back at Saturday? Is there a market going on back at Calvin? So a small business expo back at Calvin from nine to two, Saturday, the twelfth, so.
Can you give us a quick update on the lights? I know we've been working on them.
On Dix, or Wilson?
Wilson.
Yeah, they, they have been making progress on the lights. If you go down Wilson Road, they started on Wilson Road first. If you go down Wilson Road, you can probably see that the lights are well lit. I know Toshi had asked me about it because she had seen them working on it and called. But yeah, they, they're starting that process and so.
Do we have all the heads now or are we still waiting on?
They're all coming, so we had sixty-six of them. They started those first and then they'll move back out onto Dixie. Dixie's just a little bit more tricky because obviously traffic control, stuff like that. So we started with Wilson Road first to give a, you know, just get that going. It has, either one, it has to be done, so.
Are we gonna be replacing ones that have been torn, that, you know, hit?
Yes, they're on back order.
Okay.
They're insurance claims. We typically just go ahead and order those. And then they're, it usually takes a little bit longer to get, just because everything on back order. But we're starting to switch those out too, so.
All right, good deal.
Is there anybody else? All right, one more. You're the last one.
I forgot. We do wanna wish North Harden High School track team for winning the regional. My son, Coach Jackson, hallelujah. I'm excited with them. I did forget. We would like to congratulate them for regional champs for the boys and the girls. And they are getting ready to go to state this weekend, so we wish them well. I did forget. All them trophies in my house, I should remember.
He gave me a T-shirt.
Yes.
I completely forgot, so congratulations to boys and girls. I'm glad you said that Jason will have a fit. All right, with that being said, nobody else. I appreciate everyone being here. Next meeting will be next Tuesday night, June fifteenth. That'll be at six-thirty here at Radcliffe City Hall. We will have our first reading of our budget ordinance and then we will schedule the second reading of that. So with all that being said, we have a motion adjourned.
Second.
Second, any discussion, if you're in favor? All right, we're adjourned. Thank you all.